We're going to call council meeting July 18, 2022 to order. We'll get that from the legislature people.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time to come in the unit and take care of city business. We ask the Lord that your will be done in your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in the bill, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Vicki, before you get started, I got something to say. I appreciate all the prayers. I know a lot of y'all don't know, I've been out for a little over two weeks. I had a heart attack at 57. And I don't smoke or drink. I thought I was in good shape, but anyway, you just don't know what happens. But I didn't know what was going on. But anyway, thank the good Lord, he spared me two more weeks with y'all. And I appreciate all the prayers and I'm glad to be back.
We're glad to have you back.
Well, that's just fun.
Before I call for a motion on the consent agenda, has everybody read the paperwork involved in all this?
Mm-hmm.
Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Make motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion cleared. Mayor's report.
All right, we'll start off on, I'm gonna do a good bit of reading and this pertains to Church Street and paving. I'll do the reading. There's several things that pertain to it. I'll tell you how much money is there and where we're at when it should happen. This is a CDBG grant which is fully funded and in this grant it rehabs well number one and number two. It pays Church Street between Moss Hill Road and Pompey Avenue. Also it's placed a generator spool mill and circle next to the old stadium. Well, there's not enough money to do this, but we got another grant that's gonna pull them two generators out, which that's gonna put us, according to the engineer, that should be right. So that'll be enough to pay the $650,000. Like I said, it's a CDBG grant Florida Department. Right now, we're waiting on order of RF2 for engineering for grant administration. They're doing a HUD environmental review. It's underway right now and expect completion late summer of this year for that. I sent a letter to the grant administrator, excuse me, asking how this process works so I can explain it to y'all. It said, "We anticipate completing the HUD environmental review in late August, early September 2022. At that point, we can turn the engineer loose to design the project. The design phase should take four to six months, September 22 through February 2023. Then we will go into the bidding and award phase and award phase, which will take approximately three months, March to May 2023. About six days later, construction should start July of 2023." So it should start about a year from now. And I'll be the first one to agree that y'all got a lot of potholes in that area.
It is.
And I'll take care of time it rains, that's what we're putting in, it gets beat right out.
Good deal.
So Jane, if you want to speak?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
You were talking in my house tonight. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Lord. My name is Dolly Edwards and I live on 3280 Homestead Street. I've been living there like it's some years. And some people I have with me is Hazel Elliott. He's been living on Homestead Street like fifty years. And we have the Davises and I have my pastor and his wife sitting in the back there. That's Church Street. Okay. First of all, I would like to say, Bernie is good place left. We see the progress going on in Bernie. Two stores coming up, beautiful store that already coming up. We want our community to be a part of the progress. We have a concern. That's why we are here today. We are here to bring to your attention about the payment of a road on Pompey Avenue and Church Street. Road is unsafe to travel. Like you said, big potholes in road. I took a picture of it, the pothole. I guess y'all travel that road anyway. You know it's there. They come in and cover the road, put the stuff in wrong, but they put it in there, but it doesn't do any good. Second day, it's all gone. That road is a heavy travel road. Whether y'all know it or not, big trucks, I mean, people come through there all the time. I didn't know it was that. Heavy travel tires start working, then I find out people travel that road all the time. We are not looking for a band-aid there because we already know that's not the end. We want you to fix the root of the problem by paving road. We think we have been very patient. Some of the other roads have been paved. Even one part of Church Street have been paved. What we want to know, okay, you answered that question, whether you plan to complete the road on Church Street and Pompey Avenue. You already said, you know, okay, well, another question I had is, what is the process that we have to go through to get this done? And I have another question. Can you give us a date or the update when it will happen? Thank you. Can you answer any of those questions?
What I'll do, I'll make you copies of this to give to you. As far as Pompey Street paving, there's no money out there right now. Not Pompey, yeah Pompey.
Pompey, yeah.
But we do need to go down there and mow it and clean it better. I'm agreed with you on that at all. That needs to be taken care of. The same thing over where I live. We've got a contract to mow downtown from the state. We took that contract, but we mow certain areas and don't mow others. And we need to change that.
Y'all overlook that community all the time.
I'm not.
I mean, I've been there a bit, so I know because I stay there and I see what's going on and nothing happening there in that community. And you know, we just sit and wait and see what will happen. You know, it needs some attention too. We want to go with the progress. We want our community to look good.
Yes, ma'am.
Just like all the other communities. Where our Church Street, where the church is, we have a lot of members travel that road and even down Pompey Street, they come down Pompey Street too, they travel that road. And Pompey Street, some part of it is too narrow. You have to stop and let another car come through before you can go. I mean, we don't, it needs to be fixed.
The only thing, well, on Pompey, that street needs to be wide.
Yeah.
Because it can't, you see how narrow it is? It has to be wide. Now that, as far as the council and the city is concerned, the property is going to have to be, in order to widen it, we gotta get property on, at least on one side or both sides to widen it because there's enough, you can't widen it unless the property is giving up.
I understand that, but you take property from us, we took our property. You took our property to widen the highway out there.
I know, but that-
Why didn't you get the property?
That was the state, okay? Now, a person has to be willing. We can't take it in eminent domain, I guess.
I guess attorney?
You can, you'll have to compensate.
We can compensate for it, but suppose the person refuses? Because that has happened. I'm telling you, it has happened. There's a person, somebody has refused to let go of any property, their property. So how would, that's why I'm asking you, how, I know we have to compensate them for it, but-
Ideally, they will give you a right of way deed, just for the-
For that part?
The part that you need to expand and you don't have to pay them, but if you're going through eminent domain, you do have to compensate. You as the government are taking their property.
Well, I think, and I've been down Pompey quite a bit myself and Church Street, and I think probably an easier, quicker fix, band-aid maybe would be mowing and trimming on Pompey.
It needs to be, that's great example.
Yeah.
Back to your right of way, what I need to do is go to the courthouse and see how wide from the center line of the right of way is on each side. May not be an issue, may already, probably may already be there. So, but I'll go to the courthouse, get the easement on that road and see how much right of way.
Will you give us an update on what you are doing? We want to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Here, shouldn't that be in the, we should, we have that on file?
We should, but a lot of times it's just easier to go to courthouse quicker.
Because we don't plan to let it go.
I don't, I don't want you to let it go.
We're not gonna let it go. We're gonna keep until we get what, you know, everybody is having, we want our community, we got good, nice cars too.
Yeah, you do.
Let drivers not have road. And you hit one of those bumps and your car get out of line then, do city pay for that? Okay. We have to pay for it.
What I can do is, when the meeting's over, the council may want to add something to the agenda, it's approved, buy a load of asphalt to plenty of holes.
Hey, can I add to that real quick? I found asphalt, $850 a load if y'all want to put that on the agenda. Just cheap stuff out.
Well, we have a county commissioner. Do you have anything else that can go in those holes that we say? Trey?
What do y'all put in it now? Fifty-seven?
We put asphalt in before and it beat out and-
Do I build asphalt?
We put, yeah, we put rock in it, pressure run and it beat out.
Well, we're fixing to pave Eppenageal all the way to Homestead Road. So if y'all can piggyback on that contract, if y'all have the money, then basically the mobilization fee, you know, I don't think I'm gonna pay, it's out with Vietnam, I think it's already, I think we already had that in the contract.
That, that would be from Pompey, though, not Church Street.
That's Eppenageal. From Pompey, from Pompey on to Homestead Road, that's the county maintain part of it. We can't pave this off city, but we've paved that out.
Come out the dirt road, you know, to me.
Yeah, bro.
I know there is something that you can use because I live on Holmes Creek and it's pothole city. And one of the neighbors had something because he hit his truck in it and he came out there and put something in it, but every time the county put something in it, it was washed away within a week. And this, so I'll find out from him because this was magic in this one pothole.
Well, that's for us to know.
It's not our responsibility to know.
Yeah.
It's that hot asphalt we're putting in.
Yeah, it's the same, it's that perma patch, same stuff we got on.
Does that last long?
It's down to the knob of a pallet.
Well, if that's what we need.
I'm in.
Well, living in the city then, because they count.
Yeah, it does. Say what?
Living in the city then, we are in the city then. We pay everything everybody else pays in the city.
That's right.
And we deserve what everybody else have in the city.
Correct.
That's why we are so concerned about it. We've been sitting so long, waiting patiently, not seeing anything. When you pave the road over the old Church Street, we didn't say anything, we thought you were gonna come over and finish the paving process, but now-
Ma'am, that was the county.
That was down to what they call a stop grant. And you only get one a year for just a certain amount of road.
That was done to the city, but the county paid the bills.
The city bought the grant and always just tell me to take it over. But right now, I-
Tell them why you did that, why was it done?
The city had the grant set for two years and was about to lose it, so we called Dustin Castells in to allow the county to take over the management of the grant, to front the money upfront. Something's never been done, you don't do that, but they allowed us to do it because it's roads and such here were repaired. So we come in, because the scrap or stop is a, is a paid, you pay for it, then you deal in return and get paid, city has the money to do it. So the county come in and worked with them and we paid the road and then got reimbursed from the state.
But the buses go through there, don't they? Does the school buses go through there?
I don't know if they do or not.
They do, they go through there.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they go through there.
But that, that has zero to do with it.
I know that one.
Yeah.
But if the city would buy for those scrap or stop, we'd be more happy to work with the same way we did with that grant.
Wouldn't do that on Pompey.
Buy for, we'll help you work bus again.
What's your last name, Ian?
Edwards.
I should know that. I'll bring you a copy of this explaining where everything's at. I'll make several copies and I'll come to your house and go over it with you. I'll go over with Jane, go to your house, go over with him. I'll call the engineer tomorrow to see when we are awarded the money, if he can speed things up. Since we're gonna have to do the two generators, they come in another grant. And I'll go ahead and write up work order for the mowing and paving, not the paving, but the patching.
So Jason, you're gonna try something new?
No, it's that same patch. We got that new stuff, we got that perma patch.
What would you say about that? What would you say about the hot patch? The hot stuff?
It's that, it's that perma patch.
And you said that's more money?
Yeah, it's like a thousand for, I think last time, I can't remember what we paid for.
Were you serious?
Yeah, I think it was around a thousand a pallet.
Well, if it's gonna last, then why are you, if we're using cheap stuff and it's not last, don't, it makes sense to get the most expensive and let it last than to get something that's not gonna last.
Yeah, we're gonna do Church Street, we need two pallets.
Well, would trucks come through there? Would it last?
There's a sign that, is a sign, see, in the United-
A pile of trucks.
We found it there.
And we need a traffic sign up there too on this Pompey Street because those cars come through and why don't we somehow down Pompey Street? If they had kids out there playing, they could get run over, it's unsafe and it'd be a sign up there saying, you know, slow down, you know, whatever, but just speed there.
Speed in the sign where kids play.
Well, we don't have any kids up there, but if the grandkids come on down.
But there's a sign that says, you know, there's a sign that says, "No trucks." Looking at it.
Well, they don't obey it.
David, David, they don't obey it.
I don't home every day.
And they, I see them, I see them.
I see them come through, I see them come through there all, all the time.
Me too, I see them. And there's a sign that says, "No trucks."
On Church Street, I don't know about Pompey.
They're going, right at the beginning of Pompey.
I don't know what's, it's on Church Street.
No, it, and there's one right at the beginning of Pompey, unless somebody took it down, just find it, say, "No trucks." And they ignore that, they don't pay no mind.
Maybe a couple of speed bumps.
You can't do that. Okay, let me ask you. We thought, we thought we could do speed bumps, but we thought not. We tried, we talked about speed bumps before and it couldn't do it.
So what we're discussing here is, even something with Pompey Street, we got the grant, it's in process with Church Street. It'll take a little time, but it's gonna happen. So what we're discussing here now is, y'all mentioned adding to this end of asphalt. Is that what y'all want to do for Pompey is to patch it? You're putting in work order, he's mowing and trimming.
It means Church Street.
It's Pompey.
Is that pothole, we call it?
Pothole, oh, oh.
Running out of haze, haze, it's a big pothole here. That's where the water was washed out of here.
No, no, the water didn't wash it out. They, they, they put a sewer line-
Put a line across the road and towed her out. And they told me that it was gonna come back and kick us. And which, that will happen.
I bought concrete and tied it to myself.
And everything-
And that didn't work. So it's placed just above my house, big pothole. When they down paved in that section of Pompey, I asked them, like 25 feet, you just come down 25 feet, you would've got the pothole, but he wouldn't do it. Okay, so when they cut the line in there, you know, that caused another big pothole across the road. They're down by the church on the corner down there.
I know there's a big one.
There's two or three big holes right there. Now this stuff you talking about, the hot patch, when you spray it in there, it works and it'll stay there. If you put it in there right, it'll stay there. So that's what we need. You know, I mean, I don't, you know, you addressed about the cutting the grass, yeah, it needs cutting. That's what happened there in front of my house, with all those big potholes running down. I mean, it's, it's, it's bad.
I know, Church Street is dark.
How long this is, how long this is not been fixed? How long ago was your Pompey Street?
Oh, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Whoever bought the property back in there.
And we fixing to do it again.
And put a water line in there.
We gotta put a sewer in there.
Then the first place, that water line really sent the wind on my side of the road. When they were putting it down the side, they switched over on my side. That's why they had to cut it off. Shouldn't have been put there in the first place.
The water line used to be on the other side.
On the other side.
They didn't know any and they put it on his side for some reason.
Well, they didn't want to do the work.
Yeah, I don't know why.
It was easy to come on my side and one of the side. I'll tell you, I need it. That's what we need, we need the road fixed.
Thank you, boy. Thank you, Jason. What I do is buy a pallet to start off with, approve a pallet of that stuff Jason's talking about and see how much it does on that road. That road is bad, they driving on their property.
Did you say you needed two?
Fifty bags full pallet.
Two, two. Okay, well, my question is this, we talking about Pompey and Church Street?
Both of them.
Okay.
Pompey, Pompey and fifty dollars.
It's not bad.
Most of those right there is, is a house.
Okay, so, so we're clear. Number nine is to approve. Two pallets, apartment, you see what it's called?
It's called perma patch, same thing.
Perma pad. What is it called? Perma pad, it's perma.
True.
How much is a load of hot asphalt?
Hot asphalt? About a hundred fifty dollars. I don't know why that comes out to be, eight, eighteen times a hundred fifty, it hasn't been used. We're talking about cutting these roads, I was listening to you the other day, it'd be so much cheaper getting to get these four hot asphalt. Where you don't have to cut the road, we have to cut spool mill twice. And that's a brand new road.
Jason, would you price the load of asphalt, like hot asphalt?
Hold on, I'll let you know in just a second.
The stuff, Jason, the stuff you talking about-
Thomas, you spraying it in your barn and put a car over it, use it for weeks because it's hot.
I've seen some done where they just sprayed in there, it's more or less turning light, it don't look like that.
We got-
Now that, that works, I know that works.
The thing is- We know that, we, like I said, we've got a grant coming to Church Street, but in the meantime, we need to do something about it. We did need to do something about it. We know, we're looking at it.
That's why I said, why do we waste our time getting something cheap? And you still gotta go right back and do it and it's not doing any good, so why are we doing that? Well, you might as well spend your money, you can get something that's on the market.
It'll be paid. We shouldn't have any more trouble.
That's right. That's the root of the problem.
Yeah.
If you pay it, that, that we end that.
Yes, ma'am, that's what we're trying to fix is where we could, until the grade comes through to do that for paving. Trying to fix until.
He said a hot load is about $3,000 for a dump truck.
Bang.
Well, that's, we need that.
I mean-
For two pallets, it's by, what, three thousand?
No.
Oh, we need a dump truck.
You got a dump trailer?
What did you say it was, eighty pallet?
No, it's like, I think it was like nine hundred something total, the last time we got it. It comes out of Patamaw.
But it's by the pallet?
Yes, a pallet, fifty bags to a pallet. And we do have a dump trailer, you know, we can always go to and get a hot asphalt. They won't let us do it. Never mind.
Well, we're talking $1,800 for two pallets or a dump truck like thirty, so what is the difference then?
Is two pallets gonna be enough then? You being-
The dump truck loads between dumps, you're buying two times for, you know, that type of stuff.
Right, and then you're gonna have this hot asphalt sitting there that needs to be sprayed quickly.
Yeah.
Because otherwise it's hard. You got a couple of hours to get it down or you're, it's just a big plump. I would just get two pallets and then we just have to order guns because if you don't use that, don't even pay.
They buy that co-patching bull. They buy, they buy co-patching bull. It's not like ours, like a dump out of dump truck. For our, for our people. And it's not like hot asphalt, where it's bomb, it'll stay loose. Johnny Day can tell you that.
Okay, so number nine is for the approval of two pallets and we'll see where that gets to, and then we'll go from there if needed. Is everybody in agreement with that? Yes. Does anybody else have anything to say about Church and Pompey?
Well, they actually said that even if they paid, did you say you got to trade it out again?
Yeah, but what I'll do is before I pat yours, I'll go ahead and run the line off the road patching. And if that way, I ain't gotta cut it up again. If I have to just run over there, stub it out and cap it for the time being, I know when you don't want to learn, I get you to, but that's how we'll do it. Go ahead and have us let you patch it.
Does anybody else have anything on this? Anybody else say anything?
Okay, we're gonna move on to the attorney's report.
I don't have any.
Church's report.
Whoa, 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 I got several things to do.
Okay, back to the mayor's-
I'll bring you the information, mine, I'll bring you the information. I'll give each of y'all, we got orders on copy.
We need to pop it to the church.
I didn't, hey, I didn't understand Church Street, what y'all were talking about here. This road is really in bad shape and I didn't understand what you were saying a moment ago about that, but-
We're gonna go ahead and patch that hole and if this right here was plain, everything, when it's laughing, the money's been assigned, and I'll bring you a copy of it.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, you can bring a copy to my, to my brother over here, you know.
Trust me.
But anyway, that, that, that road is in, is really in bad shape and I saw some people coming to Church and I'm wondering why they coming down Highway seven to nine and down Pompey Street. I was wondering why they would do that and they could just come with on up Church Street. But what it is, here's so bad up that road to you just have to, just like a snake or something, just dodging on pothole and it's bad over there. And something just gotta be done.
They know it.
But I don't know what we can do about the big trucks because we tried. I don't know.
I would suggest that y'all have a seat one.
Get the license plate number.
Call the sheriff's department, we get our signs out.
And get the license plate number.
I'm gonna be sitting on my porch and I'm not gonna get up and-
I know, well, you, that's what I'm saying, but if it happens, you see, well, we have the license plate number, you know, because by the time they get here, the sheriff gets here, they're gonna be gone.
Yeah, that's true.
That's what I'm saying. But if you happen to get a license plate number of somebody coming down there, just write it down. That's, because I don't, because the sign said, it said, "No trucks." It signs that said, "No trucks."
But they don't-
And they don't pay no attention to that. And a lot of times, I see them, I know one time when they was doing log truck, they was coming over there on the Sunday. They was coming down that road on a Sunday morning because I guess they figured there was no law enforcement or nothing out, so they was coming down there. I seen them on a Sunday morning, bringing loads, loads of logs out of Pompey.
We don't have that much law enforcement out there.
I know, but that-
We don't?
I know, we don't.
All the female projects, the small ones, that total about a hundred, two thousand dollars. Found out last week, we've got to re submit again a letter. I talked with Jason about it today, uh, what been spent on. Just three coworkers have been involved, as far as we know. So now submit a letter tomorrow back to him.
Is that on project two oh one and one seventy-seven, that have already, the requests for six months?
Two oh, two oh one is for open bridges.
One of them is for the coworkers, and one of them is for the.
They said they got, them two's got to be reached in this letter.
Okay, the six months isn't even that long.
They took.
No, it happens six months.
Yeah, it was.
I requested a six month extension, but if you need to, if you know that it's.
I'll go ahead and send a letter anyway.
Send another one.
But this time, they were requesting a completion date.
Jason?
I can get off one.
Well, you gave me six months before that's long.
That was a long, that was a long.
I think it's gonna have to be on a date, and we got to do it.
We need to go ahead and schedule a hospital meeting tonight, with camera. Go turn it here, go ahead and get that done.
Here you go. Uh, it's not only a gym, and I don't know about anybody else, but I'm gonna bring the hospital.
Now, wait, when I. Okay, I'll fix it, it's like. Oh, no, I, I got mine, we, 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 I bought it, but I knew what was going on.
I, I'm booked all next week, but I can try to come back Thursday, but this week, I think I won't do it.
Thursday this week? Back to twenty first? You said five thirty?
All right, y'all, everybody, y'all shouldn't know about the emergency acid sewer plant. Uh, now, Jason will contact me and Becky. And what I'll do is I'll send a group text out to all the council members, so they'll be aware. Right at the end. And in case I'm not here, Becky can send, get the clerk to send out a group text. Y'all can write it up, send it out, everybody wants that.
And also, uh, according to the attorney, Jason would have been well within his rights, under those circumstances, to have contacted A B.
Jason been good. I wanna thank Jimmy and Jason for what they done to keep, keep the plant running. Jason spent twenty-four hours around there, it's very much appreciated. Also, the rest of the crew, they've been working in this rain, and mud holes and everything else. Thing like everybody else retired the rain for a while. I asked Miss Mary to go to a meeting last week, uh, this F D O T grant, she'll speak to y'all about it. That's all I got.
Well, one thing, Gary, since you touched on what happened over the weekend, I would like to ask the council their opinion on, instead of just saying that you and I will be contacted in case of emergency. Is that okay with the rest of the council, if that happened in that case, and we'd all have to speak to one another?
If it's an emergency situation, I don't see where he's gotta contact either of us, do the job, son.
Well, that's what I felt.
Well, that's the question. Obviously, they're sad, with his managers, he felt more comfortable contacting somebody, so. I think it should be set up that he can contact somebody if he needs to, I just don't wanna say, hey, it's gonna be this one or that one, I want council to be okay with whatever it is.
If it's an emergency.
Well, he was saying that he, the money, he felt uncomfortable.
Yes.
And if, if it's that type of emergency, my God, what are we worrying about money for? He, he should be able to just go ahead and do it, because that, I mean, that's a health issue with that sewer plant, and I mean, why can't he have the authority? We know we have that five hundred dollar cap, but when it's an emergency, you need to ignore that. I mean, what do you think, attorney?
If he does still.
That's what we're doing.
Well, you said you had a Sunday, you were trying to get a car.
I'm just gonna let him know. I'm not, I'm not asking for.
What did you say, Michelle?
I don't want him asking for approval, I don't want him to let me know something everybody knows. There's something wrong.
If it's a true emergency, he, he should be able to do it. To take whatever action that he needs to take, and you'll have to ratify that later. But if, if he wants to, um, you know, run something by.
After you're done.
Yeah. I think he's asking just for his, you know.
Support.
Yeah. And then to have a person that can notify everybody.
So Jason, if you need to call, call. Okay, uh, church report. Um, Ray's got the, uh, commercial accounts reconciled with Waste Management, I gave you to do a copy of it. Basically, Waste Management has updated their billing, which means, starting now, the new charges that they weren't, how they were charging us incorrectly, they're gonna start charging us correctly. So basically, can we put this on number ten, to approve for Ray to go ahead and contact the customers that are affected about their billing?
Go with the commercial account?
Yes, he's still working on the, um, the, um, tape, garbage can. Okay, I'm gonna add it as number ten. The only reason I wanted to go ahead and get a jump on this is because, um, they raised the rates in January, we did not, so we spared the rate, since they fixed, since they fixed their billing. I want us to kinda be right there with them, so they're not paying more than we, we need to. And was she able to clear up the, we're paying one thing, their billing for another thing? Yes, everything is now gonna be in sync. But like I said, she, there are these few here, she's gonna have to contact customers, because there is discrepancies, and she needed, we needed you to go ahead and, okay, that, so she can go ahead and get started on it, so we're not out too much before the new rates, before the correct rates go into effect. Not the new rate. Um, I also gave you an estimate on the slower notice for the community center that is located in the back kitchen area. It came to our attention when the last renters had it, that the A C back there quit working, had it come out checked, the motor needs to be replaced. Um, did want to touch on the fact that the last few renters we've had, I had multiple complaints about the community center, I don't know if y'all wanna continue to rent it out in this condition, or if y'all wanna take a hold. Y'all wanna fix it or wait, because I do know there, I did see a grant where this was included, revamping a whole entire community center.
Wait, it'd be no air there?
It only affects the kitchen, the last renters, when they discovered it, they discovered it before, they actually had, and they put a fan in there. I was able to get the repair guy to come out that day that they discovered it, and they were able to put a fan that looped into the kitchen, so they were fine with that. So you've got, this is just one estimate? This is one estimate on it, that's why I didn't get any others, because I wanted to see what y'all thought about the idea of just waiting on it, it's like I said, we don't have that many rentals coming up, and it is included in one of our grants. One of the grants that we're not sure on yet.
That's probably two years out.
Is it, okay, so you're gonna go ahead and get the two more estimates?
Summertime, A C pricing's a lot more than the mortgage on A C pricing too.
That is very true. But I just.
Well, we also have some in there.
Yes, but they don't use that, yeah, their, their part, thank goodness, is not affected. Do you have anything else, Karen?
No, me, I'm with you.
Rec. Ration report.
Good evening, good evening.
Hello, hello.
Um, football brush, we getting started, we're at seventy-six, with more coming. Um, we've got a couple more drivers that haven't quite registered yet, um, and we got the chance of getting a couple more, so we're looking about halfway up hundred, by the time we get wrapped up with sixteen jerseys. Um, I just sent y'all, I don't think it came to the meeting, probably went through, uh, messages to get the uniforms, the jerseys done, that's already been paid for, they're on their way. Um, the last one I have is helmets, I got an invoice here for two thousand ninety and ninety-five cents. Thank you y'all to prove that for me, so they will come with that, and that's for thirty-nine helmets, completed research by the tank.
You want to add it to the agenda, or? Speaking for eleven. And what was the amount of that, Kim?
Two thousand, ninety dollars, and nine cups. Once again, the jerseys and the helmets will be paid for.
So they'll be reimbursed, that's the right problem. The helmet and the jersey, so this and all this is for the helmet?
Just shift it home. And we're practicing this track, um, until, uh, we probably throw in a football field to practice everyone's fall, we'll be close to the season. So, no kind of objection when this being a track.
Football's always practice, that's right.
Well, we used to, uh, left, now we.
Well, I know, but even the hot ones use practice. So how did, um, the forty July gave me one?
Um, I haven't turned it into her yet, I've got it in the truck, uh, we came out about four hundred plus. I don't know the exact number, I haven't, I haven't taken a picture for the four hundred.
What was wrong with bathrooms, Jim?
Uh, the day before the event, me and Mr. Jason got together and just decided it was in the best interest of the event not to use the bathrooms, because we, literally a four game night, and they started backing up, and we just didn't wanna take that chance to have them backed up, and right, especially since our highest paid vendor was, would have been right in the middle of them.
There was supposed to be more than forty ponies than there was at all, um, there was supposed to be eight of them out there.
Um, Mr. Thomas was notified, and he said due to the fact that we keep calling him one or two days ahead of time, he can't.
Can't round them up, he don't have a source.
Yeah, he said he needs way more nuggets than what we're giving him, if we, if we want sufficient amount of them.
That's the same thing you told me.
And I meant, I meant to say, that's what I called you about yesterday, because whenever I walked in there, there's some kind of soot all over the floor of concession stands, almost like it's backed up again in the, in the office. And I haven't been able to look and see exactly what it is, it's some, something gray, some kind of gray clay material, I've never seen it do that before. So I don't know if it's all the water coming back through the line, or what, and it came up through the drainers in the middle of it.
I know it's wet, but what am I mowing back here in Shady Grove?
Inside of the track, I just did the other day, because it was dry enough, because we're practicing there. Um, the minute I get the chance to, matter of fact, I wouldn't be out here putting my foot in the Shady Grove, the park at least, um, I should be able to, but it rained all day today, so, it gives me a good forty-eight hours in the rain, the park will be cut. Um, the field, that's another story.
They wasn't cutting four, why wasn't they cutting four to the lawn?
Everything but.
Sports press was not cut?
Everything but field one, half the outfield, and field two, half the outfield is cut.
That's a grass out there, it was not cut. I know Shady Grove wasn't cut, but I, if weed wasn't doing anything out there, but the sports press was not cut.
Everything but half the two fields, because there, you can't cut field two if it's raining.
And parking lot. But I got your barrel, I got your barrel, as you called it.
Around one tree in parking lot.
Yeah, I've got.
Because whenever I went out there to cut people, or I were meeting, exchanging kids or something, and I didn't feel like I could go within three foot, I was cutting a tree, so yes, I felt like cutting a tree.
Because they do so good. And I had a lot of claims too.
On grass?
Now, I bought the grass, bought everything.
Six sales up there for.
About everything.
Ten o'clock on Wednesday, Thursday.
Kids did not have nothing to do.
So.
What happened to the bouncing house?
I've heard that, and I guess I need clarification on my responsibility when it comes to that.
If you look through the contract, it says fourth of July, right in your contract, we have it, since fourth of July.
Can I please get explanation as to clarification on, am I supposed to spend money on getting those activities myself?
Well, all the time that you've been there before, we had those bouncing houses, and we had the activities.
I've been here for seven years, and the rec. director, as far as I know, has never purchased those themselves. Now, last year, I know the mayor did, uh, she went about getting it, but I don't know if she paid those out, or she reached out to somebody she knew that had, as a vendor, ended those.
I think it makes them out of red.
Well, I mean, you know, every meeting, there was a fourth of July dust.
Because, because she did call me out, because we did affect, because remember, because I discussed that, it was two meetings ago, where I was like, after I did the math, how much money we made, I did subtract that from, as far as profit for our fourth of July event.
Well, generally, everything, that's the way it's been in the past, everything did was locked in out of the red, so, when concession and all that is done, then it goes back into the.
Right.
So, you, you saying maybe four hundred, and that was on everything, that was the water, or whatever it was that you guys sold?
Just man, we sold drinks and ice cream, and what made. Now, that's not counting, that's not counting the vendors, the vendors, we made money on the vendors, that's not counting profit from the vendors. We had one vendor paid three hundred dollars, and one vendor paid a hundred and fifty, I think, so there's four hundred and fifty on that profit too, I'm sorry.
Okay, was the barbecue vendor not there? When you first told us about?
Just man, he was there, he was our, he was one of the people, he did it for Home Valley Community Church. Now, I didn't realize that that's what he was doing, until he showed up there, and he covered up his logo with the Home Valley Community Church logo.
Okay.
He was the one for the big, big church.
Where the fireworks kinda faces?
Honestly, yes, if, if I'm responsible for, if I, if I, because we went out and we contacted vendors trying to get them there, and I'm gonna be honest with you, the biggest issue we had is I'm already booked. So if we can go ahead within now, or within the next month, and go ahead and set that date now, and then in January, when you're talking about, you can go ahead and reserve the firework at people, or if you've already done it now, I don't know what that timeframe looks like, we can go ahead and be lining those guys up, by the way, we know they're booked for us, because that was the number one answer, I contacted six themselves, and was like, we're already booked, I can't, I can't get off there.
I'll have that taken care of at our next regular meeting, so if we both get on.
Correct.
And.
We'll go ahead and have the graphics, the inventory, and we'll go ahead and have.
I mean, honestly, it's always been between June the first and, I mean, July first and forward, so, I mean, you know, we pretty much know when it is, and we can plan accordingly, but there's definitely gotta be, um, more planning, more coordination, connection, so. So, but I will, I will give it a gunning, and while, before I speak to them, how close y'all want it on the board, if we can get it on the board, or?
We need it.
Or do you want it?
It's over Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, then Saturday before.
Said we'll do it July.
But a lot of people looking forward on the fourth of July, like they used to do, because some people missed it, because they thought we just having it on the board until, I don't know how we can limit it at.
Every time.
The only way, because.
Well, we had it on the third of August, Saturday.
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, y'all. Let me talk to him and see what we can get, and I'll, I'll have that information by our next meeting, so if we can both on it, y'all can both have it on, we'll definitely on.
And just so y'all, my goal, my, my thought was at the beginning, was basically, vendors come out, they pay us for a vendor spot, and then they can choose whether or not, a lot of churches, to get it from. And then they can choose whether or not, a lot of churches, they get it for free, because they're giving away a lot of stuff for free. Now, we've had churches come out and pay their fifty dollars and they charge a dollar to get the fifty dollars back or whatever it is. But then we've had others offer and they just do it for free because it's advertising for our business. Especially when it comes to the bounce houses and the, and the waterfront. So if y'all want me to, I will gladly spend, instead of making money for the event, we can spend money on making sure that it's just more stuff to do.
Well, there's another thing that Mr. Gouldy brought up at the last meeting that we had. About doing some advertising, some fundraising, and also maybe working with the shows, the music to it. Whatever, something like that, so we want to work that. I would like to see how sure the rest of council, a lot more effort from all of us put in, if it's fundraising or whatever. And, you know, in my opinion, rec, it's all about making money, it's about the community or kids. But I also know that concession is a really good part. And in the past, has done very well in keeping rec funds in place. So I, I would like to see a lot more focus put on that. I know you have had issues involving here, but I would like to see that. I've seen times when more practices were going on and concession was like making money for rec, so. And that's just my opinion, but I will get with our show and see what places and boards we can get and have that information for y'all and a price and everything by the next meeting.
If we set a date now, we can go ahead and start, like you were saying, sponsorships and announcements. We can start putting their face on the flyers and stuff.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. The fireworks that day, that's the first thing that we have to figure out. So I'm going to get on that. Right away, they were just waiting to see how it's handled. Endured it and everybody said nothing, good things about fireworks, whatever, so. I'll have that by the next meeting and then you'll have a day and you'll have all the time to work. And like I said, Mr. Gouldy brought up some really good points, more advertising and, you know, getting word out, getting donations from them. Does anybody else have anything for Timothy? Or do you have anything? Thank you.
How it works for all. Y'all cover most of it, just with your chemistry. The water tower is cleaned and back online now. I want to let y'all know that Jimmy is helping me now a little bit. I need to get AAG to come look at a lift station and they'll give me a price. And then I'll get the out. The new air compressor is here, we saved a thousand dollars off my last, what did I give y'all, three thousand? And Mr. Robbie Tipton, he lives at twenty-six forty-nine Home Street Road. He wants to get a well put in for a.
Garden, back in the back yard.
Irrigation.
Well, he don't want to do irrigation because it's got, you know, it's going to suck in it. He wants to put, not by his house, but kind of like basically, there you go. And if y'all wanted to vote on it?
Was allowed it in the past.
And what was it called, Jason?
I'm going to put a garden back in that back field and it'll be, it'll be organic, so I just think it'll come out the ground.
Michelle, I know that we've approved this before, but I don't know if we voted on it or not.
I think you did.
I think we did, but. That story's around.
I'm pretty sure that you voted on it last time.
Okay, number twelve.
That's, that's all I got.
And Mr. Tipton?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-six forty-nine, Home Street Road.
Jason, did you find out what happened over at the church?
It's a leak, it's one.
Huh?
It's a leak.
It's a leak?
It's one. It's on us.
So you worked it already?
Yeah. It's on all this, I got two on it already.
Jason, do you have anything else? Anybody have anything for Jason? All right, thank you. Fire teacher board? Karen, you had a talk with Chad or anything?
He's working on a grant. He's been requesting information, I think, given to him. Speaking of, do we know where the paperwork would be when Vernon founded the fire department and they fit it into?
When the fire department was founded?
Yeah, when it started it.
They probably need to keep doing records.
You're going to laugh at it when I say it should be on file, but it should be on file here or at.
The county. And the county probably don't.
The county.
Well, assuming the fire department doesn't have it, since he asked me to have it.
This is old fire team, y'all remember?
It was all around.
The day?
No, it's all.
I don't know.
We have fire department though.
They may have it at the county.
It was the jail. And fire department.
When the fire department, there where that big water tower was, you know where that building is by these?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's right. Well, and the jail was there as well. One of the, yes, that, that only fell out of the river, still there. So I don't remember who was the full name. I know that there was, there was somebody called James.
I'll contact Larry if I need to make those.
They, they have that information. They, they have that information. Six, three, eight, sixty-two, and thirty-four.
They seek to offer?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Public participation, Ms. Howell.
My name is Julie Powell, I'm a legislaturewoman. Instead of, back when I came back to the meeting, the next day, me and Karen had been emailing back and forth with the contract stuff. And she said the mayor wanted to get some updated numbers from us. So instead of calling him, I just figured it'd be easier for me to come in and that way I can speak to everybody. We're not going to give any updated numbers unless we put it out for bid. I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly on all, and I say updated numbers on, on the stuff that we gave numbers courtesy for. Like the town square, you know, the highway seventy-nine, two seventy-seven, that kind of thing. Or unless you want to amend the contract we already have, and then we can talk numbers.
Okay, well, first of all, this is why I asked everybody to begin with.
Well, no, this was, no, 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 actually, that was just original contract, that has nothing to do with what you come back.
No, this is, that's totally different, that's different. That comes, that, that's situated.
Yeah.
I'm not talking cemetery out.
You're not talking to cemetery.
I'm not talking about cemetery out.
That was with the cemetery.
What I, what I asked the clerk to do? Y'all, we got to give DOT an answer, ask them to come back and revisit. And add that section of highway that they're not mowing, that they have never bid on.
That we had to have to rebid, so we just got to get one.
And so what you're saying, unless, that's what I'm thinking of.
Well, okay, so why, I, let me back, why would we give you numbers, we gave you last time out of courtesy? So you can have an idea on what you're looking at, they were good for a month. Just so you can kind of have ballpark, ballpark figure as to what each place was going to kind of cost. And that was just us, I mean, it wasn't nobody else, don't get me wrong. He's now asked for updated numbers. I don't, we don't want to give updated numbers, we know gases went up, everybody knows gases went up. We don't feel right given updated numbers. And then turn around in a year and now you want more updated numbers and nothing's ever done. Kind of thing.
My fault, I apologize.
I mean, you shouldn't say it.
We don't know nothing about this.
Yeah, I was going to say, I haven't asked you for any numbers.
I know you have.
This was the first that we've heard about it. Again, we've, we've asked you not to do this.
Right.
And I've asked you once before, and I'm going to ask you again, please don't do this without asking the council.
We don't know nothing about this.
Because if we don't know, then.
We don't have an answer for you.
I understand why.
Because we don't have an answer for you, because we don't know anything about it.
I'm sorry.
Now, you're calling it out proper.
In a proper way, just say if we did have a, just say the city square. Would be advertised, you say we needed someone to take care of the city square, and you're right, I wouldn't give out a price unless it's a sealed bid and we have to have three sealed bids. And then we go to that one.
Correct, correct. Now, we've had a couple of places that have amended our, our already current, current contract that, and added, asked us to add things. I mean, and that's not a problem. But once we agree on numbers. But most of the time, we don't do anything, and we only did that out of courtesy the first time. But we don't normally do any kind of numbers unless we're ready to cut off bid.
Because I was thinking that, I was thinking the contact, because you said it wasn't going up.
But that's why I'm calling the contract.
That's why we have a.
Yeah, no, that's two different totally things.
Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Tipton, I think that you're, if you're all right, I think you're, you're good?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else have anything on public participation before we move forward with the bid? Okay, number one, this report is FBI community possession grant program.
Okay, well, it's, it really isn't anything that you have to look at here tonight. Like this lady said, I love Vernon, I'm new here, but I love it. And so us being on the tourist quarter like we are, two seventy-seven, two seventy-nine, seventy-nine. DOT has a grant program. I think it's too late for me to do anything this year because people that are planning these grants, they go back months. But when I sat in on the class, I thought, oh, this is wonderful because you can apply for up to a hundred thousand dollars. Now, they, they might not give you that, but based on presentation that I put together for them. Our medians and everything that they stuck us with, we can do stuff with that. And I found out that there's a couple of tree farms here in the town, so that's a business for some of our businesses. And there's just a lot of things that we can do, and I'm, I'm okay with doing it if, if everybody agrees. Just, you know, lay out a plan, if somebody had any ideas and wanted to add to it. But yes, I think we could make our street prettier. Especially because I've been, I've traveled, I've been military all my life, and so when you go into these little towns and you see the cute little square, you're just. And it makes you stop. We've got seven or eight restaurants right on our, in our little town, you know, we'd like to be appealing for people that would just say, ah, let's stop here. That kind of thing. So I'm open to any ideas, but I'm willing to do the work. This will be for next fiscal year, though.
Does anybody else have anything, Ms. Mary, on this? Number two, motion to approve garbage credit for account six sixty-one in the amount of fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None, motion carried. Number three, motion to approve sewer credit for account eleven forty-two in the amount of thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve, resolution twenty-two one seventy-nine.
I make motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Question before I move forward, actually, this is for Michelle, but it's slipped my mind, do I need to read the first paragraph of this?
I'll just read the title.
Okay. So let me do that, one seventy-nine, although it's already passed. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Vernon, Florida. Adopting a policy related to city purchases, including a minority business enterprise policy for use in administering community development block grants. Providing definitions, providing an action plan, and providing effective dates. And that's what it's for. Motion to approve twenty-two one eighty. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vernon, Florida, adopting a policy and procedures related to the city's quality assurance. And quality control for use in administering community development block grants. Providing definitions, providing an action plan, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-two dash one eighty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vernon, Florida, adopting a policy related. The city administrative financial management policy for use in administering community development block, block grants. Providing definitions, providing an action plan, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, may I ask you, did the person that I just.
Chad.
Chad did it.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two dash one eighty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vernon, Florida, adopting policies and procedures. Related to ensuring the city's detection and prevention of fraud, waste, and abuse for use in administering community development block grants. Providing definitions, providing an action plan, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-two dash one eighty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vernon, Florida, adopting a policy related to city's administrative financial management. Policy for use in administering community development block grants, providing definitions, defining an action plan, and providing effective dates. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number nine, do I have a motion to approve two pallets of firm impact on Charleston Coffee Street?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number ten, do I have a motion to approve Rose to contact the commercial garbage customers? Citizens to report changes to their billings?
I make motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number eleven, I need a motion to approve red helmets in the amount of two thousand ninety dollars and ninety-five cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number twelve, can I have a motion to approve twenty-six forty-nine Home Street, Mr. Tipton, a well for irrigation slash garden purchase?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I? I said I didn't have a manner of procedure report, but can I get just some clarification or direction from the council? Really remind in for Karen Vincent about when y'all want agenda items to be reviewed by me before they go on the agenda? None of these resolutions or the envelope will came to me for separate review. I just got a copy of the agenda packet late Friday afternoon, and that's not really enough time for me. I mean, these happen to be, you know, the heels.
I know, they are.
Because they're for resolutions, we don't really have a lot of time. The way these come and for these particular programs, there's just not a lot.
Well, they should be going, you know, we're, they should be going, we go a workshop anyway. You know what I mean? It should be discussing a workshop, because we, and once we do the workshop, then you should get it.
And generally, it's all, it's.
Discussing a workshop.
Sent to her, the board, these things over here. But these came up.
Well, I was going to say, these have to do with our CEBD grant, and the longer we wait. The way they explain it to me, these are standard, I guess.
Well, that kind of standard, like she said, it's, I think, it's just about the same thing.
Right, and you can't really change it.
Change it, so. But they still. But when it's something else, like she said, and it's something that's a little different, we need time to pass something like that, it needs to come.
Oh, we got that.
So she needs to go over on it, because.
Yeah, well, and we had a situation not long ago that we had to pull one.
Right, we got off of that.
So anything like that, in my opinion, and if it's to be done that way, it should.
It's all about the workshop.
We presented to the attorney.
Yeah, I didn't know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I typically need more than, you know, just the days of.
I know, that's what I'm saying, if we did it, if we went over there in the workshop, right? That's going to be the workshop, because we should anyway.
But it may not come till after the workshop.
Which, which one did you? Because it was on the consent, consent agenda was at the workshop.
Because we use the presidential stuff, and we.
Because we used to present it, we've already discussed it.
That was a, a resolution that came up in a meeting a while back with.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm, yeah, but I'm trying to figure out whether, what I didn't send her in enough time besides the resolutions. What else, what didn't, it's what I'm trying to figure out is what, where, what I need to work on.
I, I, well, I can explain that, um, and I don't think anybody's saying that you need to work on anything. She needs clarification from all of us because I made for a resolution to take a view and say, you need to put this on the agenda, and nobody has to know about it. That's the kind of thing we're discussing. Okay, I received a packet on Friday.
Right.
That had resolutions in it that I didn't know anything about.
Well, I just got.
I reached out to the attorney to ask her if she knew anything about it, because we had not discussed it in the workshop.
Okay, so.
And she did not, so they sent them to her.
Well, did they give you a damn eye on the character?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, the longer we take to approve the resolutions, the longer I take. I can, you know, there's initial grants, I understand, and then to finish up the paperwork, you know. But from now on, I will take whatever time y'all feel is necessary and make sure you got this.
If you've got enough time to show, if we just go from the workshop to the regular meeting?
So, you're, you're saying you're not adding anything to your meeting agenda that wasn't discussed in the workshop?
At the workshop.
So, that's what you're wanting now?
I did, well, sometimes we come up with things, yes, in emergencies, we have to discuss them.
Right.
But otherwise.
Well, I'm okay with anything, y'all just tell me how y'all.
Get the rules. And generally.
I ask if anybody did anything added to.
Who they.
If there's something, you know, important that's, you know, we don't know that.
That's what I'm saying, so if I did it in between the workshop and the meeting, I wait until the workshop to, to bring it up.
But I need, I, I usually need to see it before the workshop.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but so, don't, don't put it on a meeting, send it to you, and then add it to the workshop following that.
She's looking for a time scale, is what she.
Yes, because I have to.
Y'all know I go to a meeting, and she has to meet y'all.
So, you need at least two weeks to, to go over there and review stuff before?
We can.
A workshop or a meeting, is that what you're doing?
I don't know that I need two weeks, um, I generally need more than, than.
A day.
A day. So, normally what, normally what Karen does is she submits the whole agenda packet to me on the Friday before the meeting.
We just find, and I don't, I don't charge any extra for, you know, for reviewing that.
But when there are, you know, substantive items that I haven't seen, it just, it's, I need to have time, you know, to, to dedicate to reviewing, you know, things. Even before they come to you all for discussion, so that I can point out, you know, concerns that, uh, so. I'm kind of asking, can we set like an agenda preparation cutoff, or we're not gonna, you know, we generally don't add things until, just so that she has time to submit things to me.
Especially if it's something to do with law, you know, I mean, um.
Yes.
Something that you.
That's what I'm saying, you know.
Because some of the things she.
Anything to do, even with the branch, she, she so needs time to review anything that the branch is wanting information of.
In order to.
That's what I'm saying.
That needs to be.
Well, she represents the city, so if anything like that's gonna need any time.
That may call legal action later on, she.
But these.
Well, I mean, emergency happens.
We get to run it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Other things, no.
What do you think, how much time do you need?
Um, I mean. In my other communities that have a, a cutoff, it's at least a week, sometimes ten days. Um, that's part of the meeting.
About a week?
But sometimes, you know, contracts have to go through a negotiation process, and we'll have to go back and forth with the vendor, and I'll need time to do that. I just, except I just kind of want a direction and clarification from the council about. Like I said, these resolutions, it's not a big deal because it's the, you know, the subject matter, but I don't want us to get into, you know, a habit of, um, me not having adequate time to review before it comes to you all for, for your discussion.
So.
So, like.
A week.
Unless there's a work. Like the contractor, like in very long maintenance, that we should have gave more time for that, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, something like that needs to be submitted to me.
Even though the only thing I did was, they said to guess, like, nothing changed, I mean, I'm trying to clarify my head. If nothing, if, even if it's nothing changes but the date, we still need time to, to look at it and then get.
That's, that's all y'all if you want me to review.
Generally, the attorney reviews all contracts, means like before.
Especially if it's a contract, yes. She needs to see that before we sign.
So, we have a.
Five days, a week, seven days, seven months, five days?
Five days before your meeting, but it should be.
Five days.
Unless there's something.
Well, if I get an emergency, well, that's.
Do you have anything else?
None, no.
You said something.
Um.
I need to warn you, Chad had something, but.
I don't know if any of you got a chance to drive by, see the flooding, the, the lake that was there.
Where?
Trey, hasn't it killed you, uh, addressed that in any way, uh, previously as far as being denied as permits and stuff like that, that kind of stuff?
Where is it located?
Across the.
I ain't been out there.
Potential commercial property.
I ain't been out there.
Are we allowing commercial, are we allowing, anybody wants to change your property?
It's not coming before camp.
But it still has to come before camp.
I don't, I don't know about that, because, hey, you know, there's something about the portal on Highway seventy-nine.
I'm sorry?
Like, Highway seventy-nine, like, right now, I live on seventy-nine, and it's residential. But I was under the understanding, if I sold my property, it could, could automatically will become commercial, that's what they say.
There is no overlay of city rights.
How?
There is no overlay of city rights.
It's still. It'll have to go through the county?
We have an overlay of a shell that's in our court order, but it has to be approved by the property office.
It does.
And each adjacent, each adjacent county, or each, each county that lies in has to be, it's the city office, I think, there's no, there's no overreach on the county that would approve something commercial without becoming part of the council party.
Well, that's moved incident. It was at one time, but I don't know what it is now.
Now, they will come to the county for the planning commission first, that's where they'll start at, then the planning commission will bring it, just as we.
Just like.
You've improved cell, cell towers, you've approved, uh, uh, the dollar stores this in Vernon, uh, then it comes for y'all to approve. Then it comes back before the planning commissioner, and, and ultimately comes for a county mission, but it comes to y'all second. Y'all picked in the vote on one.
Because at first, you know, the store needs to be, there was a lot of things they couldn't put in.
Not a lot here in town.
They could not put in that.
Yeah, the middle.
But now.
Because I got the letter.
I don't know.
Yeah, Jimmy, Jimmy, I couldn't, I was in the sign, we told him the other day, there's one that's on California, but you'll, you'll see it, and there, there is no overreach on the county that's gonna put a commercialized property here without the city permission. I reckon the county could, if they wanted, and that would be pretty brave.
But the jointing property at, at mine, where the creek runs through there, uh, the water was actually backed up in, on top of us, and there, but on top of that. I have a prob, I'm gonna have a problem whenever somebody comes to us and asks us to approve that property, because with the pictures that I have. I mean, that place was flooded all the way to seventy-nine, up the concrete driveway that the state put.
Trey.
Yes, sir.
You gotta put a cover in, does the building inspector have any, any authority over that?
Because y'all didn't hear that, when you grew the shells, that's your city.
He didn't ask anybody, he didn't, he didn't know or nothing.
No, he wouldn't, he covered for us, put a cover in, now there's a driveway permit, it's still, that need to be a state road driveway, but he said not, what he covered. I know what you're asking, it's on private property, can you put, are you asking, can you put a cover in there, is that what you're asking? That'd be, you turn that lady right there to your left, she could be the one to do that.
Well, wasn't there, there was one there already, it's, it's, where's the driveway, is the cover under that driveway?
No, no, no.
It's not. I thought a cover was under that driveway.
This is not a DOT cover, it's protected out of its property.
He said that, the landowner actually said that he went by DOT Florida, Department of Transportation's specs. That's, that's what he told us, um, Saturday, I believe it was, over the phone.
But it's not in the driveway?
And it's not in the.
Because I'm sorry, it was in the driveway.
It's actually in a, in a, a natural flow of water.
No, it's about, oh, Chad, about seventy, eighty yards of that.
Yeah.
It's worth breaking, yeah, the, the problem is, you don't have big enough cover. That, that's gonna be the problem, but the thing is, it's gonna fall off, Chad, because it's gonna flood like it did other days, it's gonna flood everything, because it's flooded, it's flooded, it's flooded off.
Well, isn't that, you know what the bridge, where they got those metal things, it, there's a, they covered there, isn't it?
Yeah, there, but that, you can drop a truck through there.
I know, that, that's a real big one, that's right there with those railings on it. But he's on this side of the rail.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and between the driveway and the rail, is that where it's, it's driveway.
His driveway and the, and actually, the driveway is where he put the coat.
Yeah, you can see it from how, it's about seventy-eight yards.
I mean, the only thing I can think of that this stadium might have to do with that, if the cover's not in the driveway, would be some kind of nuisance abatement. But I don't think y'all have a nuisance abatement for this.
Speaking of the right of show, with DEP, just, I haven't had them look at it, because it's, it's in a, it is a floodway. And that would, that'd be up to DEP to enforce it, that'd be a call by the neighbor.
I mean, because not only is it gonna start causing us problems, but as it backs up, anybody on the other side of the highway, it's gonna continue to cause problems there, too. It's just not in one section.
Bloody damn.
That's gonna, it's gonna come back to you.
By me. I know, it's, we already got.
If something else is gonna have to be addressed sooner or later. It might, we're gonna do it now, if we have to contact DEP, then that's what we have to do.
And also, I'm just gonna throw this out there, the, the pharmacy, the parking lot. It's just getting washed away. It's, it's flooded, it's state flooded, but it rains a lot, but when it's flooded, it's, it's taken up, I, I would say almost half the parking lot. I'm gonna get right, and it's.
Where?
In the water, right there.
Vernon Road.
Vernon Road, yeah. Right there, and it's all happened since the highway came through, and they rerouted, the natural drainage did. And it's another one of those things that, are we going to be able to do anything with?
No.
What the state has done, are we gonna be able to do anything with?
Are we, Joey?
The contractors that were involved in it?
No.
And we've got, we've got places that are flooding now that.
The, the problem that we're gonna have with, um, trying to go after the state or the contractors, is that the planning for this roadway happened a long time ago. The design was done, I think I was in high school when they started that.
You would see that, I would say.
Um, it, and, and so we're looking at, you know, issues with structural limitations on, you know, if there even was some kind of negligent, negligent design, but we've also had, um, um, you know, other natural problems with the hurricane coming through, I mean, everybody's flooding. Every community around here is still with, with flooding. The south part of the county is in really bad shape, um, you know, like some of the places, I think you're probably gonna have to look at, try to get some kind of grants to do, um, significant, um. And study, um, about, you know, what you need to do. It, it may not be anybody's fault, it, it may just be, you know, the way the landscape exists now.
Well, I understand they changed the plans that were not.
And then they have, but that still doesn't mean that they were, they were negligent in doing.
No, that's what I said, but they, then they changed them several times, the plans.
Yeah, we, we, originally, there was not supposed to be a rate meeting.
Oh, I know, it was.
They, I believe.
Right, so you would need, you would need to retain an outside engineer to review those plans, to review, um, you know, the construction itself. Depending whether or not they're just negative that's gonna be.
Not like, we don't.
A lot of.
Does anybody else have anything?
No.
Does that, Maggie McJohn?
I make a motion, Maggie.
Second? Discussion. All in favor? Maggie McJohn.